We'll call a meeting to order here. It's Tuesday, April 18th. And our first item is a public hearing. I think we're opening the public hearing.
We are.
So is there a motion to open the public hearing? Second? All in favor? Aye?
Dennis?
For the camera, will you have it back here?
Dick, why don't you test and see if your voice works?
Zero invisibility.
It's not working. Carrie, can you please put the call-in number for Dick so he can call in? Sure. Thank you. If you put it in the chat, I'll send it to him.
There isn't? Oh, that's what it is.
Are you working, Dick? Can you hear us? No?
Dick is having some problems with us hearing him. He can hear us. I'm gonna send him the dial and number.
Okay. I think he can hear you, but he can't hear us.
Yes, he can.
Okay. Anyway, our first item here is a public hearing for Newcastle, 60 Algonquin Drive. Application for a site development plan approval for construction of the swimming pool. So we've asked her about it by way 21. It says that I think he makes some progress with the health and it is important.
Yes, sir. We sure have. Robert Sherwin, landscape architect, representing the client, Joseph Smith, who's here. Obviously, it's 60 Algonquin. The last time we did present the plan, we discussed the location of it and happened to get a Westchester County Department help approval to do so because we were going to be removing some of the close proximity to fields and setbacks and everything else. We had to run through that process and that was, I believe, April 11th, we have approval. And that was one of the big points of obviously not being approved.
Right, right.
There were some other comments from the town engineer that I had subsequently addressed. Actually, not on the plans to reviewing. There's some minor things of limit of disturbance, clearing and grading, limits of disturbance and actual square footage, just like that. The other major hurdle that we did have and we did address through the zoning board of appeals was we were overrun the overall block coverage. And there was an enlargement of the driveway prior to the next zoning of the property and this terrace that was built. With the addition of the swimming pool, the 815 square feet and the small addition of terrace, we were over that development coverage by approximately, I believe it was like 1,100 square feet. And then going to the zoning board, which we did get approval for, we had a little bit of negotiation with them, and we're actually removing a section of driveway. And there's this kind of this awkward walkway here that no one uses along the driveway that we're gonna remove. So in their approval, we're actually moving about 450 square feet, round numbers, of impervious coverage and then adding our tools and trying to minimize that coverage. And that's where we're at. And obviously, the reason why we're here is the original subdivision plan, as you guys might recall, had any future development swimming pools, tennis courts, etc.
Yes, yes, of course. By the way, is Bob on tonight, Sabrina? Bob's feeling?
He is. He's running late. He's not on yet, but I can tell you, we need some revised information. I know Bob really wanted to understand the amount of impervious surfaces and how it related to whether or not any stormwater controls were needed. And we will need to understand what areas are being taken out or removed to get down to the variance that was approved by the ZBA. So we'll need some finalized numbers and some coverage calculations worksheets so that we can understand what is actually going to happen based on your conversation with the ZBA and so Bob can make a determination regarding stormwater controls.
And I believe that as the applicant, we are engaged, Massa Monaco's office, the whole time with the health department. They were supposed to as well be doing a stormwater permit for a stormwater application. In light of what's gone on with the impervious coverages, we are probably need to mitigate, excuse me, about 1,300 square feet of surfaces. And that would include what was approved in the original application of this house back in 2004. I did an overlay of what was approved, how many, how much impervious coverage was on there compared to what we have now.
Right, so I think I would advise that that information be submitted, you know, for Bob and I to review and to, you know, kind of put all the pieces together and make sense of what the zoning board approved and what your intentions are in regards to mitigation and for Dennis to weigh in on that and then we can advise the planning board accordingly.
I guess we really need to see the stormwater prevention plan when we have that set.
Can you do that as a condition of the resolution of approval?
I don't know that Bob would feel comfortable doing that as a condition of approval because you have committed before the zoning board to remove certain things, but this board hasn't had an opportunity to review a plan that has that information in it. So I would at the very least continue this, advise the planning board to continue the public hearing at least until the next meeting so that you can submit that information to us and we can put eyes on it and make sense of it.
Were there any changes in the landscape plan at all and the mitigation that you're doing as a result of these changes that you, that you're going to be going through?
No, the landscape plan was mostly for kind of buffering and kind of screening.
Right.
But I did have an error in the quantities and I just cleaned that up and have the right numbers on there.
But the plans, you don't anticipate that it will be materially different from what we've seen before?
No.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may? I also think another reminder to the board is that we had a neighbor with concerns that is downslope from this property. So stormwater is of importance just to understand how it may or may not affect the off-site neighbor. We want to make sure that everything is in line with what it should be, so.
Well, this entire site was always very sensitive for stormwater. I mean, it was one of the tough things that we had when we were approving the subdivision right back during the wagonload days. And so we really need to be careful about that. We had a lot of concerns that we, more than concerns, actually, answered the problem. Yes. So we really need to be cautious about that. So I think stormwater prevention plan is, will be important to see. Fortunately, I think it should be fairly straightforward and pretty easy because, again, the impacts are not that substantial.
And that was always my impression that we would be working through that and that's normally what we do with it.
Yep.
Running the mill, swimming pool application.
Okay, so any other questions that board members have?
No.
Dick, any questions, issues? Okay, nothing there?
No.
Okay, great. Jennifer, would you give us your thoughts in terms of, just so that we all know here on the planning board, what the issues might be with regard to the variances that's been granted and what that means or does it mean for the planning board?
Sure. So generally, you know, the coverage variance that was granted by the zoning board relates to the zoning requirement with respect to coverage and the maximum limitation set forth in the zoning code. But obviously, coverage is also relevant to the planning board's review of the stormwater for the application. So, you know, even though the zoning board granted a zoning variance for the coverage, you know, that doesn't mean that coverage is sort of off the table and not to be discussed by the planning board. You do still have some jurisdiction over coverage as it relates to stormwater and its effects on stormwater.
I thought that was the case, but by the same token, I think we'll try and make it as congruent as you have so that you're done.
Yeah, no, we were never anticipating that happening to do stormwater.
Right.
Well, that was always our, like, if you told me, Joseph, give me a stormwater, give me three, give me six.
Right.
Give me 600, and get it.
Yep, yep.
We just want to.
Yeah, be done.
The easiest, like, if you were to tell me, Joseph, listen, I appreciate the help. I don't want to say that we were, that was always our intention.
Do you know where, how far along the dis- 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 dis, 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 dis? I ask you only in terms of trying to schedule you as quick as possible.
Yeah, no, we want to stay on the next agenda for sure. And I don't know when that deadline is to submit. And that's the reason why I was trying to see if we could do that with just staff review moving forward and not continue the public hearing now. But we will certainly turn something around and get something into review, all I can say.
Okay. Is it something that you think that they could turn around in perhaps a couple of days and then?
Felicia, what are the deadlines?
So the deadline, the next meeting has actually passed. The next deadline is April 24th for May 16th meeting.
Dennis, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I want to make sure Dennis was satisfied. I know he had previous comments.
I think you stated it's a pool landscaping plan and it seems to be concentrated in that corner and I had no issue with that. You're not removing any trees and some are, you know, growing on the property in that section as well, so.
Yeah, it's pretty well vegetated.
Right. And the rest of the area, obviously, there was a lot dedicated to the septic in the back, you know, right? That was all maintained as lawn, so it's there's not much maneuverability back there, you know, aside from what they're doing. That's part of the issue. So if we can get that in really, you know, within the week from your engineers and then, yeah, and, you know, continue public hearing and
Appreciate it.
and then, you know, get you through.
Okay, that's what we can do. Thank you.
So that's, that's the push. Make the push.
I, I like what she said, the young lady.
What'd you say? Oh, yeah, pool for summer, yes, of course.
You know what happens when I go home? My wife stays like, yay! And I'm like, may... Thank you so much. Look at that. Listen, I promise you. But I really appreciate it, yeah. Thank you so much, guys.
So for the record, the public hearing is being adjourned to May 16th. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. Thank you, Jennifer.
Perfect.
Okay.
Dick, I think your sound is working.
Yeah, it was.
I think it is too.
Yeah, so I don't know if you need, you need the phone or no? No, it's definitely coming through the phone. It is coming through his phone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried it without the phone and I could hear, but I couldn't, I couldn't speak.
Okay.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is Gulata, 15 Surflane. This is an application for a final subdivision plot approval, application for a site development plan approval to mitigate the impervious distance sports court and clearing and grading lines. I don't know if Bob's on there yet because I think he had some problems that he identified as well, so we'll try to get that laundry list for you. So we'll get this thing going for you. So, do we have a map?
Can you me to find it? All right, give me two seconds.
Thank you.
It's gonna take a little bit because I have to forward them.
Is this your first trip into Newcastle? This is where you're welcomed here?
All right, it's gonna, it's gonna take me a couple minutes. Felicia, I haven't downloaded it. Hang on.
There's a photograph at the beginning of my presentation.
That's what she's throwing off. Organized chaos.
Yeah, you're taking it away from me. It's like something on the floor until they do.
Oh, we can't do it. She's having a hard time.
Yeah, it's just taken a bit to get through the internet here. Is it on the submissions page?
Yes.
All right, I'll see if I can find it. Thanks, Charlie. I just, I seem to be stuck in accessing Town Hall.
Felicia?
Yeah.
She's saying she can present the first screen. Did she just let her in on the Zoom?
I said she was doing anybody.
Right, I just, there were many, so many emails between you and mine back together. I just wanted to know if you had the ID and did not, if you keep searching.
Let me see. I have it.
I got it. I have, I have the agenda ID.
Okay. Please, electronic show.
So.
Yeah, my computer is frozen logging in to get them.
Do you need a webinar ID?
Okay, hang on one second. Thanks, Carrie. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Sorry.
You wanted the survey up first? The survey, you wanted up first?
Yeah, I could introduce my vocabulary.
Yeah. Could you stay right there, Carrie?
Yep, that's good.
So, little background, my husband and I purchased 15 Surflane in February 2022. We've been there just over a year. In October 2021, we went into contract. And during that time, we certainly did our due diligence of, you know, having the many inspections you do. We even had a town walkthrough because we had had problems relating to a undocumented patio we had no idea of in our previous home. So we've been through a lot of things before and new question, very good questions to ask. Of course, musical checks, septic inspections, and also make sure that any open permits were closed out by the sellers before we moved on. Okay? The one thing that I was told is that there was a sports court that was not permitted and that we would have to either remove it or get it permitted. And that was how it was raised to me by the town. And so I said, oh, okay, you know, we could always remove it. Fast forward, we have four kids, soccer and lacrosse player in particular. They've been out there every day. I did talk to Tom DePaul on one of the other many site visits that he came to visit our home. And he said, yes, it's in the clearing and grading limit line, so there would be some give back that would have to be done in order to get a permit. And that's when he put me in touch with Julie to begin this process. Okay? And furthermore, another thing that we loved about our new home is that there was an existing patio. And on that already existing patio, we wanted to build like an outdoor kitchen space. So we did present that, that permit. And I do have it here, but basically, before, obviously, we could build that or add one, not into our footage, but just put on the patio, just the kitchen. We did get a list of 10 items that needed to be done in order to even, you know, address the outdoor kitchen. One of which, number three, we are here today, it says, "Sport court constructed without permit and constructed in clearing and grading limit line area. Site plan approval from the planning board required contact us, you guys, to do that." So that is why we're here. So that's what we're focusing on here. And to be very transparent, the other two things which we are very close to resolution is, the first thing they said is that the structure appears to be appears, appears to be in the septic system disposal area and the system needs to be located on the site and shown on the site plan. We have done that. We are working with Mike Campbell, the original engineer of the septic system. And we just got approval from Tony Cuny and Westchester County Department of Health. So we are, we understand, again, we bought place, we inherited problems that we did not fully understand, yet we acted, we did our due diligence to find these problems. So we are ticking down this list and we're making sure that everything that needs to be done has been addressed. So here today is about the sport court. And I did have pictures, but I don't have.
Yeah, yeah. Still with the application.
Yes, there are some, and I actually have some additional, I don't know if we want to disturb those. So here's some additional pictures.
Oh, the bigger pictures, yeah, okay. So the sport court is relatively small, it's not like a full tennis court or basketball court.
No, no, it's like a fighting ground.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's fighting, fighting court. Fighting, um, turf.
Thank you. And it is a curable surface, so it actually percolates the water down and has been installed in such a way that it's built into existing grade and it's really not changing the way the water flows down the hill. We are dealing with wetland property. So you will see on survey, in those three corners, there is three different wetland areas. And those are not main wetlands areas. The wetlands are really dynamic, so a couple of years ago, probably, they didn't exist. They are now identified as the wetland IDS areas and they consist of approximately 4% of the whole property. And each of those wetlands is however, more than 183 feet from the existing sports court. So in some ways, that sports court really doesn't come into jurisdiction of the wetland consideration.
No, it's outside the buffer and everything else, right?
Exactly. So the only consideration that we could take is the fact that there is a hill. And of course, with that hill, the water comes down into the wetland. But since the surface of this sports court is curable, it still clears it and acts pretty much like an existing grass, especially that is an existing surface, right? So you're not proposing to build it. So, so I suspect that from wetlands perspective, really, we don't have to address that any further. However, if we would like to mitigate this property, the square footage of this floor, we would most likely do it in the woods that we come into the wetland area. So because the way the property is structured, most of the frontier is landscaped. Then we have the house, we have a little bit of lawn in the back, and then we have the woods. So if we were to mitigate the square footage of approximately 600 square feet, the sports court into the woodland, then we would bring it a little bit closer to the, to the wetland area. So my proposition was to plant small, so plant small and allow for those plants to grow. Plant in areas that are open and to just cause as little of soil disturbance as possible. We would also focus on the native plants, plants that are specific for this area. We're trying to establish middle tier of the woodland, so something that doesn't exist there. We're trying to impact the ecology in a positive way that has been probably affected due to the deer browsing.
Does your current lawn area extend now to the clearing and grading li- line in this section? I think this is five.
Yes. Yes.
So that's, that's the lawn area?
Do you have an access to this presentation that I've prepared? This actually shows it a little bit clearer.
Yes. Carrie?
Yeah?
You don't know if you need to go up or down?
I actually, I actually downloaded it.
Oh, there it is. Oh, okay.
Who's the next page?
You want me to pull it up, Carrie? Hang on.
Okay. So the second page shows this survey. So the survey is dated November 15, 2021.
You're good, right there.
And it marked a pretty recent wetlands area. On the second page, I am highlighting to you the wetlands and the distance. It's something that I've already addressed that we are further away from, the tent, the sports court is far away from the wetlands, so it's really outside of the jurisdiction.
Right. So Dennis, do you agree? I mean, you know, wetland issues that are brought to this?
Correct. Then one of your requests.
Yeah, we're beyond the, we're out of the buffer, right?
Yes.
So this is a map where I'm showing to you where I would propose to add some planting beds. Those would be, the green dots consists of approximately 1,000 square feet. So twice as much as was requested by the town. But we thought that given the fact that we're planting small, we would like to actually add and allow for those plants to grow and have some of the space. So I'm adding it within the clearing space, right? So I'm adding it close to the wetland. But again, we are hoping to do it in the time when, where the ecology really allows us, so, and we're trying to plant small. That's the best place for us to add plantings and to maybe to impact the property.
So Dennis?
That's the concern, sir.
You have a question for that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, have you, what are your thoughts on the landscape plan?
Was this submitted as part of that?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I, I agree that I did not see this, so.
I'm sorry, this one, this, this specific map has been added based on your most recent request.
Oh, I see, okay, all right. So then, so then I would probably have other comments then to this.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's why I was asking, yep.
So the reason why I chose this location is because we're dealing with existing woodlands. So once I visited the site, it was pretty much dormant, so I'm not really seeing how much light. And I'm getting, one of the reasons why something invasive species are active, such as Japanese matweed or barberries, it's because they actually start to become green in early spring. So most likely, those areas where they're present are allowing for light penetration. But because removal of those invasive species will require for us to use some of the chemicals and they are non-selective. So if we use the chemical, we won't be able to plant in the same space because we'll be killing what we're planting. So we'll have to play a little bit with spaces where we have allow life penetration and we're not, which we're not affecting with the chemicals and then address that. But I identified those spots as possible for planting, plus minus, we grew it a little bit. Since the plants are small, we are talking about imperaneous. And if we choose the plaques or some of the plants that were suggested by your advisor on ecology where like mayflowers or trout leaves, we could also consider those. Those are pretty much bulk that we would be planting. So again, the soil interaction would be really minimal. And then chemical usage would be also kept to minimal because we're using both manual techniques and.
So that would be specifically sprayed on specific bushes and that was a great time to identify barber, of course, because
Yes, because.
That's not the only thing that's left out, yeah. Got honeysuckles about it.
Right. So I think that you have misinterpreted the intent of the grading and clearing limit line here. First of all, your proposal is to mitigate for the impact of the sports court beyond creating clear limit line by improving landscape in the cre- clearing and griddy, clearing and grading limit line zone. That doesn't mitigate the impact. The way to mitigate the impact is to provide more of the grading and clearing limit line to compensate for what you've taken away. So any, any improvements you make with more landscape material need to be done, not within that zone, but in what you were, have already talked about as being the yard area, would be one place, wherever else you can think about where you'd like to have it on the, on the other side of the clearing and grading limit line to balance out the areas.
Correct. I understand your point of view on this.
What's our point of view? Well, it's a fact.
I understand this fact, but in, but in some ways, the ecological impact, what you're asking is to return the square footage within, within our area space.
Yeah, you got it. Great, excellent. So the next thing is, let me just, because I think I know where you're going, and just let me. Yeah, you got it. Great, excellent. So the next thing is, let me just, because I think I know where you're going and just let me sort of go there with you. If you look at this photograph, this is the gradient clearing limit line comes through here somewhere. This whole area here has been cleared, the trees are still there, but the undergrowth has been cleared, you can tell this is not a forest floor. So and I don't have photographs for the rest of the property, but the intent of this line is that no activity happens there. And activity is clearly been happening there. So what we need to do, I think, is we need to first of all understand what is allowed and not allowed by the town code, which is legislated by the town board here. And then figure out what to do about the impact of the area. And my interpretation of the code is that you need to compensate for that impact by taking away the area which is not in that zone. In other words, we need to balance out or providing something which has real compensating value. And providing something which you're are considering as compensating value in the green and clearing limit line zone doesn't compensate because you shouldn't be in there anyway. That is supposed to return to north, to to forest floor because it's not just a plant problem or a plant consideration, it's habitat.
That's why all the plans that we are suggesting are supposed to improve the habit. So my analysis is that the deer, due to the deer browsing, we have a damage into the lower canopy and to what would naturally exist in this area. And therefore, we're coming in and we're restoring the woodland, so.
It won't restore itself.
It won't restore itself because it's taken.
It will, go to a park, let's take a walk in a park, you can go to the park right over here.
It's taken by the invasive species. So there is a value of removing of invasive species, and this is an activity that is done not only here, but it's organized all across the country, right?
I can wait, and the invasive species, you make a good point. I'm not arguing that you should leave the barber and all that other stuff in there. But what I'm suggesting is that you need to otherwise leave the forest floor alone. And this is, and so I, if you want to go ahead and we maybe want to consider improvements inside the zone, that's fine. But there is an, there is not just a a problem of the area, there's an activity problem here that needs to be addressed. And there are, in some divisions we've done, we've actually put monuments in the ground so that people know that they are not to mow past that, they're not to even go into that area because it is considered a habitat resource for the overall biomass of the town. And that's the basic principle that I think we need to be looking at. For me, the mitigation of this little area is not a big deal. I mean, I'm sure we can find a a solution to that, it's not that much. Uh and I, otherwise I don't have a problem with this. We need to, I think we need to deal with the activity problem here.
So I think the the other issue is, I guess at some point you're going to need a side yard variance, right, with this sport court?
I was told it wasn't considered a structure, but Tom, who came over to me, he said it does not require an area, so specifically told him, it's not mine.
Good, okay.
My neighbor often write a letter saying that her kid loves to go down the hill with two.
Sure.
Um that would be a type, you know, in a good sense, but again, I told them it's not.
Okay, good, good. The 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 observation I was wanting to make was along, uh I was observing is perhaps some of that mitigation might take place, you know, between the property lines, what the sports court is and and in that area. You know, not to put, make it all shaded or anything like this, but just to give a little bit of break between the property lines. Um that could be, I think, useful. Uh and somewhat practical.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um and I think would help, uh you know, right now, your current neighbor is is happy about that, but we have a lot of unhappy neighbors from time to time in town and when they start seeing a sports court and they see something that that's close, it can can create issues. So one of the things that we often do is we'll have some buffering with vegetation that might, that might help us uh get some of that footage back that we're looking for. I don't know how much space there is there and how and what we should do. My sense is it wouldn't be just underbrushed, you could probably put a couple of trees in.
I'm glad that we, like, this is the front of the woods. I mean, I don't think we, we also discussed an option of adding another foot in front of the woods. I mean, if we do it along the linear length of the backyard, that is, that is gonna alleviate the problem altogether, maybe. So but but it's not doing anything to ecology, that's why we came up with a plan of developing that woodland that would have a better, better impact on on nat- natural plants and on the habitats that are existing there.
This, this, uh my reading of this photograph is that this really has not been cleared. This looks like a natural forest floor.
That's what I'm asking.
And so, and I understand, and I think we support the idea of getting invasive out there, we we often, you know, do, we can to encourage that.
That's great.
That's not the issue. The other, otherwise, it's supposed to remain like a forest floor, which is fine. If you want to put other plant material in here because you think it might boost some other vegetative material, which could be habitat, I think that's great too. I don't know if we want to consider that ample compensation for the the impact.
I guess, I guess we would need to see what the the space is and see what what Dennis's opinion is in terms of what.
But there's a there, there's a difference between this and this, as you can see, and this, right, this is also a little bit.
Oh, yes. This is, that's.
In that zone.
Are those different, those are different pictures, so it's a slightly different perspective.
There's a difference. Yes.
Yeah.
So we're.
Just kind of distribute them so everybody can refer to those.
Sure.
So Bob, your consideration of doing something here in order to straighten it is actually.
Thank you.
It's a very small space.
Yeah. I think it's fine.
Yeah.
And I mean, this is the. So.
I'm interested.
Completely.
Uh if, this is remaining as a, it's unpashed, I mean, the woods haven't been removed from it.
Such as gravel or dirt.
So this is whatever, whatever soil there was, and it's kind of unpashed.
Yeah, I should actually check this, that's not in the sports court. Can I, can I see that picture? I just want to where I was already.
Well, it's a consequence, it's it's definitely. It's a consequence of the, of course, because this this looks like it's been graded.
I don't think it's been graded. I think this track, this part, quite honestly, has, it's a sub, uh it's a compacted soil due to the construction.
Okay, so it's a construction.
And so, so in this respect, potentially, it has been years ago somewhat of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is my, this is the backyard corner, like the river is right there, like this is, this is not.
Yeah. It's great.
Nobody walks there. This is not destroyed at all.
It's great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
So I'm just trying to give you perspective where these pictures are coming from.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
This is behind my, this is, this is place that, this has not been.
This is cool. It's, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like that there's a compromise that may care. It just really, I think, is up to the discretion of the board to decide whether or not getting rid of invasive species and improving ecology of places outside the grading and clearing is acceptable, or whether or not that buffer between the sport court um and the property line is a more applicable place for it. I mean, I I think you would, you're at, I mean, we're open to suggestions, but I think, I think, let us know where you think the relationship does occur.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's all, I think it's all, I don't think there's a big deal here.
Yeah. I think, frankly, I think it'll be sort of like both, uh because I'm not so sure that the space that we pick up around the sport court is really sufficient.
Yeah.
And like, it's just a great idea what you're proposing for the invasives and doing whatever for the the sport down there.
Do you think keep these in efficient?
Yeah, yeah.
And I think also, just in, we'll explain it here, in this zone, right, which is this zone here? Sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
This zone in here, which sort of the butts are playing?
Yes. Yes.
And I don't know what's going on over here, but I'm guessing it looks a lot over here. I'm guessing that this looks a lot like this.
Yeah.
Cease activity.
Oh, yes.
Except for the invasive, as I said.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back there. We have not touched the footprint of our property one bit, so, so this says cease activity, right, because we had never started activity.
I asked you if it was your first swing at Newcastle.
Right, right. Yeah, I appreciate it. So I mean, I think the key on that would be to get the information into Dennis and then we'll have that. What we could do is, I guess we have to go, um, turn this behind the screen. But Sabrina and Jennifer, we have to do a public hearing on this?
I think that we need a little bit more information before I'd advise the board to set a public hearing.
I mean, the the actual details of the plans, I think, is is Bob on there?
Bob is not on, but I know in my discussions with him is are some of my comments, we really need to understand the um the coverage on the lot.
Yeah, this is, this is Dick, um a couple of questions. I see that there are some wetlands and uh part of the grading and limit line in this particular case should try and uh make sure that we stay out of the um um the buffer zone between the wetland and drier ground. And so that's, that's a thought that would be nice to have it, uh you know, put on the, on the paper, uh the drawings and some things. Uh and and then two, two minor things is, are you, are there stone walls, uh you know, that have been put in place? They, are they counted? If so, are they counted in the coverage in one area or the other? And then my last really picky own question is, the um the vinyl shed, what, what yeah, group of uh things is that uh you're covered by? I doubt it's much more than a hundred square feet. But um you know, it's, it is a permanent feature, yeah, in our, the way we look at things. And so, you know, that, that should, make sure that's added to the right place. I don't see it in, in A on page, um, let me see, the final subdivision plan application.
Right, and that's also, it's clear and green, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah. Okay.
We, we were told that like kids play equipment and plastic things like that, like after that.
Yeah, okay. That makes it easier. Sabrina, do you want to run through your comments?
Sure, real quickly, um it is a type two action in accordance with the state environmental quality review app, so you have no further review under seeker. Um it, as indicated, the sport court is a structure, so a side yard variance from the ZBA is 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 required for that. Um and then the, the, the brunt of the rest of my comments relate to coverage calculations. There needs to be, there's some corrections to the coverage calculation worksheet um that is in the subdivision application, but we really need to understand based on the existing site plan, what are coverages and what aren't. And that relates to Bob's comments relating to changes that have occurred on the lot over time. And you know, most definitively prior to this applicant's ownership of the lot, but there has been development on the lot which he needs to assess in regards to stormwater controls.
Yeah, it's unfortunate Bob's not here.
Yep.
Yeah, but all of these comments are in his memo, so both of our memo, all of our memos were circulated to the applicant and the applicant's professional. So she should have those comments to address as part of the next appearance before the board.
Yeah, so apparently um the short version is that when Bob was going through the plan, he discovered unfortunately even more activities took place here since the building was approved. Um and apparently no uh no trace of permits. So uh the issue is, I mean, I think he even made a remark that one of the retaining walls might be as high as seven feet high and this kind of stuff and normally, that's perfectly fine, as long as we have an engineer that says it's sound, we have that certification from an engineer. But uh so there's other issues, unfortunately, there, I don't know what your checklist was, I know the ten or fifteen or whatever it was.
The patio, the patio will be.
Yeah, something was over the septic tank or something that has to be looked at every year.
We had, we had a company come, come market the whole thing out and had everything drawn up that we have something for, you know, for the health department.
Yeah. Yeah.
That patio does have retaining wall, that size, you won't have, you know, get drawn up and, you know, presented.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But you get on the checklist.
Yeah, was it, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, I, I feel bad before you guys because, you know, you moved into the house and then you, you bought, you bought more than the house, or you bought us, oh my god. Well, I would say worse.
I appreciate that, but I do think, I mean, we tried to uh preempt some of these things by having walked through beforehand because we did have, some, some other things happen, we could go sell previous house. And so, you know, the thing is, it seems like we keep moving the goalposts, quite frankly. It's like every time somebody comes and that sometimes is the first time we're doing it by retaining walls. The fact was a thing there, not only before we bought the house, but suddenly times afterwards and it's like every time it's playing and you start to have a conscious sense of what they could find next. So a little day is getting quite frustrating.
Sure. Well, we, and also, um Sabrina, you, you've indicated that a side yard variance is needed, that it is a structure, and yet the applicant has said that Tom has indicated to them the field that it's not a structure and that it doesn't require a.
I'd, I'd have to, I would have to confer. Yeah, well, I'll have to confer with Tom. Um I had Helen Cantrell, the assistant planner, uh do the first review on this. I'm not sure if he spoke with Tom. We will coordinate that on our end.
Because it's temporary structure, I mean, so it's not going to be both things involved. It sounds like you just drop on the site.
That's what the, the court.
Or no, I thought you were talking about the final check.
Oh, no, the final check.
It would be Tom's decision, Tom's decision.
Yeah.
So we'll confer that.
So that'll be, that'll be resolved and and uh in a worst case scenario, if it's necessary, I think, based on what we're doing here and the litigation that you folks are pursuing, you know, we give a very strong letter of support to the ZBA, you know, please, um get them through this, you know, as fast as you can because it's the only right thing here, fixing everything. So we should, we try to help you as much as possible to the extent we can. Um but Bob's, Bob's memo is very important to go through, uh now that we have this information. So the result, well, we'll resolve the issue on the side yard um requirement. And Dennis, you had some comments or questions? I guess, I guess some of those have been responded to, but we don't really, you know.
Right, um, yeah, no, and and some of these, just based on your submission, you know, for the record, in summary, some of the things would be wonderful. I don't want you to oversell it because for the reasons I was saying here, like I doubt that it's a shell block hickory. Um you know, that's been threatened, I think, by the state uh listing for a long time now, so I just, you know, things like that, I just wanted to to clarify because if you were to erroneously alert to the potential to have a threatened species on your property um in the land of Newcastle, um that would, you know, compound anything you would never get done through a walkthrough. I mean, so that's why I just wanted to point that out and make that for the record uh here, uh with respect to uh to that species. So as Dick had pointed out, you know, the way this line is drawn, uh and again, I know that these were existing and it seems like, you know, you're amenable to, you know, whatever needs to be done in terms of, you know, coming up with a little extra square footage here or there. So you may want to corral some of the other items that, you know, sort of appear beyond the clearing, grading, uh limit line that, you know, were unlikely uh approved when the house was constructed. And that's why I listed like the shed, part of the generator and, you know, linearity of that wall. Um so I, I know it's just for the legalization of the sports court, but if you want to try to capture everything and not remove any of those items, then then those should be included in the, in the calculations as well. Again, uh just, you know, commenting on, on, you know, a, a rare species, you know, again, this is not a a recovery project. Um if it's, you know, by chance that this species, which may or may not be in the specific area, but is in this general study area where to utilize it, that's something that's, that's great, but I'm, I'm not going to look to review the plan or hold you to the standard where I need something specific that this particular New England cotton tell species uses. So again, there's no need to oversell it. Uh you know, what's proposed, I agree, is a functional uplift to the, to the ecology. And I just listed, um you know, some additional uh natives that I had observed because, you know, I, I always tell people, you know, I don't mind cheating, I never mind, uh listening to what a site is telling me and if there's, you know, something that's working there, uh I'm more than happy to to promote that. And additionally, if you see any other nasties, like some of the things that I saw that need to come out in a particular area, you would want to, you know, address those and not just Japanese barberries, so. So that was it in a, in a nutshell, but but I do agree that, that your discussion earlier, you know, that fundamental difference of so if you're in an area that's beyond the clearing and grading, but you're doing something that is functionally improving, we're doing this kind of after the fact. Like, in other words, if you were coming to a proposal before any of this uh was done, wetlands is the only analogy I could use where it's like avoid, minimize, mitigate. You've kind of lost the opportunity to go through that exercise when you're now in the future and after the fact. So to your point, it's fair to look at other areas within the clearing and grading in the line that you maybe potentially could grab back instead of starting in, in the woods. But I think it's an overall evaluation of the entirety of the property is, is reasonable to try to a- address these, so.
Yep, so if you can give us those measurements, you know, in terms of.
I agree.
We're doing. Thanks, Derek, yeah. Uh that will be pretty helpful because it helps us, what we, what we try to do is balance this with the encouragement there and 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 for the good things that you're going to, going to be doing, doing uh to mitigate that. So um you know, unfortunately, we just have to kind of grind this out. So, we, we do have to go to a public hearing. It, I, it seems to me, Felicia, that, uh, excuse me, Sabrina, you know, we have most of the stuff here. Um, we got some responses already to Dennis's comment. We do need the things to Bob's comments, I guess. I mean, we could all schedule a public hearing, we, we can always, you know, continue it if we need to. But if we have, uh, schedule a public hearing, um, you know, that gets you a little bit closer to.
Would it be okay to schedule the public hearing, uh, pending, uh, or contingent on, uh, Bob waiting in and say, wait a minute? I don't think that that's.
Well, he has a memo here, so it's just, you have to respond to the memo.
You know, we, we can.
Wait, I'm sorry, Sabrina, Sabrina, just a second, I'm sorry. I'm not saying that the memo, I'm saying that if he were here, he may say, well, there's too much on this memo.
Right.
And so, I don't want to speak for him in that regard. I'd rather, I'd rather, if we can, schedule a public hearing and let him sort of pull back and say, wait a minute. So I'm sorry, Sabrina.
Yeah, I think.
I have had conversations with Bob earlier today, and he felt there was a lot for the applicant to do, and it was premature to schedule a public hearing. If the board is, is apt to schedule the public hearing, I'd make it contingent upon adequate response to staff memorandum.
I think that's fair enough, I think that's good.
About that, that works for me.
Yeah, if that, if that, Jennifer, if that's.
Yeah, that is fine.
And, and, you know, we're not going to have to serve time for that, uh, that sounds good.
Not on this one.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we do that? So, uh, but you may need a little bit more time because I think the cutoff for May sixteenth is just next week. So you may need more than just a week to get the stormwater issues that Bob has earmarked in here. So what, what's the next cycle?
Okay, so the next, uh, submission deadline is May fifteenth. That's for the June sixth, June sixth meeting.
Hopefully they'll give you time to just wrap everything up.
It kind of worked, I think, I have enough time.
So in addition to the questions in the memorandum, you would like to more specific location, um, for the mitigation?
Yeah, and, and, and specifically around the, the sport court itself and.
Sport, uh, the sport, but then would you like to meet in person over there? And we can make it, you know, if you're inside and.
I'll always take class outside, I have no problem.
Do that.
And the big question is the variance, we don't know. Yes, I mean, yeah, that's, that's got to be resolved, uh, by the department. And they'll have to make that determination and resolve that.
So we need to say, we need, we need Tom to draw these meetings to say, okay, there.
Well, Tom or Sabrina, I think, heads up the department. So we should be talking to Tom and Bob and Cullen and, uh, resolve that, determine whether or not this is a structure. I can tell you, I've had.
I will get that answer tomorrow.
Yeah.
So another response is to the, to Bob's memo, things that, um, he would like to see is this storm.
Stormwater damage.
And he was just kind of a control plan and, um, and who, who was that?
We need the coverage calculation worksheets as well.
Okay, so they are very much included, and I've done two.
They're, they are included, but they are incorrect.
Well.
Need to meet with staff.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So my, so my, the land surveyor did it erroneously?
Could be, could be. Might account for something that we don't count or something, we didn't count, then we do count. So. So we're, we're the interpretation.
I, I definitely need more specifics on what makes you think that the coverage calculation is incorrect?
There's a reference to the, there was no, there's a reference. If you review my memorandum.
Is it driveway?
It, it talks about correcting the maximum permitted building coverage. That number is wrong.
And so has that number changed since when? Because we based that off of the, of the storm, of the, of the, um, what the maximum build coverage is when we bought that house.
It's, it's not the right, it's not the right number. When we do the calculations ourselves, it's, we come up with a different number.
So is this the thing where we go back and forth until we actually guess the right number? Or can you just?
No, no, it's not about guessing it, there's a formula for it. Based on the size of your property.
Well, I guess what, what, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a rational, uh, process that one goes through.
Right.
On calculation, one goes through.
Professional.
They just want the answer.
Yeah, that's right.
Like I hired a professional surveyor to do that.
Right.
And.
So what, if you, Sabrina, do you please just send us the corrected version and we're happy to refill it out and submit it again?
And talk, talk to my, you know, land surveyor.
Absolutely, absolutely, but this gets back to a lot of what Bob is asking for, and that's to understand what the current coverages on the property are.
It drives a lot.
Yeah, no, yeah, I, yeah.
We did our due diligence once again, hiring professionals paying for this. And now you're saying, we need to redo it.
Well, I, I guess, I guess that's what we're saying.
I, I just, I mean, uh, it's, I'm sure it's a process here, but it seems a lot easier that if you just give us what it is and you think those numbers should be, and then again, we're happy to correct it and resubmit it. But this is, we already hired professionals.
I don't agree with that, in fact, we hired professionals, professionals have been, don't be wrong.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
Yeah, we have, but we have lots of records, I'll say lots of records. We do have records that are referred to and brought before us that are in the town, in the towns, in the town files, which, which are inaccurate.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure, I guess, I guess the guesswork seems to be a little frustrating. Yeah, so, so just tell us what the answer is, and we're happy to do it. So tell us what the number is that you're working with, we're happy to recalculate based on that.
So as of now, we need a storm waste, we need the wastewater plan, drain plan, okay? We need, um, new coverage calculation. Um, and we need more specific planting in certain specific areas and add up that square feet.
Yeah.
Was there any other items that, of information that are needed to be submitted for May sixteenth so that we can be prepared?
Right, just to get out of the checklist mode for a second, you'll know what I'm talking about. You're going to, and that's why we're going to need, it's going to be the best candidate locations, right? Or locations A, maybe to address them and B, as the functional uplift. And, uh, so that, that's kind of hard to nail right now, sight unseen, but that, you know, and at the end of the day, if that turns out to be thirty square feet more, that, you know, you'll just run with it. You know, that, that, that's all I'm saying, just to get out of that, with the ecology part, that's all.
The client.
You understand that, that's all.
How old is, is super flexible about where that space comes out?
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah. We, and we thank you for that, and we appreciate it. We, I mean, we're, we're very flexible in terms of what the solution is. We just are asking for a little guidance in terms of what's the solution that's acceptable to you guys. Instead of right now, again, we feel the process back and forth, and like, we're giving you our proposal. You don't like it, we come back with a number, propose, you know, so again, just whirl into whatever it is, you guys. I think this would be very helpful, Dennis, definitely. And I think also, um, you know, um, you should, you know, give Bob a call if you have any questions on some of those technicals.
I'm a little, I'm looking, like, my husband and I both made time to be here today. I, I felt like if, if, uh, if, if holding something, because Bob couldn't be here today after this many months of planning.
Yeah.
It, my husband and I have put a lot of time and also.
Well, we're not holding up, uh, we're actually going to, you know, schedule conditionally the public hearing, which we have to go through, whatever, so the process is not going to be held up.
Yeah, you have, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll finish.
You haven't, you haven't addressed Bob, Bob's issues yet. And if Bob were here, it would not, that would not constitute addressing the issues that he's done yet. He wouldn't be making any more progress than being here, not being here.
Sure.
But I, I know, I've been working with Bob for many years, it's terrific, and we're more than happy to sit down.
Just have to talk to him about the plan.
Yeah.
So this is a surprise, a lot of time, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, sometimes our process is a little weird because, you know, we, we come to a meeting and staff is doing all different kinds of applications and inspections all throughout town. And then we have, you see, we have a timeframe for our getting it and then reviewing, getting it out to, to you, to us, et cetera. So it's, it's, unfortunately, it's not one of those systems where, where it works very well, where people come in on the day of the meeting and say, well, here are the answers. You know, Dennis and Sabrina and Bob will have to go out and verify, verify those numbers also before it's approved. But we've got, we can do some of these things conditionally, for the, the final, um, resolution. And, uh, we probably have some of that involved in this. But anyway, we haven't lost any time, because we have this going forward to the public hearing in a conditional basis as long as. Uh, what was again, the timeframe?
Deadline?
Yeah, May sixteenth.
May sixteen, okay.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. For the June sixth meeting.
Yeah, is that okay? Are you, are you comfortable with the timing?
Uh, I probably won't be able to attend the June sixth meeting, but we can probably have a meeting with Dennis, uh, and we can update our presentation that will show specific locations, and we will address some other, uh, issues from the memorandum independently to just confirm Bob.
Great.
Ahead of time.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll see you in a, in a few weeks.
That's good.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, just so you know, um, I've twice sat there.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And so I, I know what it's like, yeah.
No, no, no.
I appreciate that, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. We'll be in touch via email.
That's fine.
Schedule the timing.
Okay.
Please be careful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, you too.
I used to be in your shoes, I got you.
We can try. I mean, they're here, right? These people are here.
They are, they're online.
Oh, they're online, okay. Okay, let's go to our next item. We have, uh, some, some timing issues here. So, uh, our next item is Rosansky, ten Cynthia Court, application for a site level kind of pool for construction of an in-ground pool, stabilization of a gravel trail extending beyond the clearing and grading limit line. Jennifer, question for you, if we have right now a quorum going into this, uh, with free physical folks here, but one might have to leave for emergency, uh, what happens at eight thirty when, you know, this happens? Vic is still online, so we have three, but, um.
Yeah. Okay, hang on, there we go, okay. Um, look, you can continue having the meeting, but it's, you're not going to be able to, it's not going to be constituted as an official meeting of the board. Um, but you can continue to have an informal discussion, you can't take any action, any decisions.
Right, or unlikely to do that anyway, okay, so it would be advisory, I guess, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, so do that. Yeah, Rosansky, are they, oh, they're here.
They are, they're on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. I'm, I'm Jerry Barrett, I'm the landscape architect and site planner for the project. Um, we represent, uh, Blair Khan and her husband Greg Rosansky. Um, Blair is on with us tonight, and Alan Pilch is the project engineer who's working with us. Um, so if the board would like, I'd like to, uh, kind of go through the application. Um, and, and just kind of highlight what we're, uh, what, 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 what we're looking to do. Um, ask Alan to talk a little bit about how he will be addressing the engineering issues. And then I'd just like to address some of the points that came up in the staff memos that we will be addressing and reformatting our information and get it back to the board for continued discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to start out with our site plan. Can everybody see our site plan is up? This is our existing conditions plan. Um, this is the site that's here now, this is Brandon Drive. Cynthia Court comes up here, and then there's this long common driveway that comes up and serves these lots, and we're at this site. Um, this is the site in the wintertime, um, and it's deceiving because if you look at it in the summertime, it actually is very, very heavily wooded. Um, but in the wintertime, of course, it doesn't look that way. Um, just to orient the board a little bit toward the, toward the, the project. So the, the, the nature of this project is, it started out is to install a swimming pool on the, on the property. And once we got into it a little bit and realized we had some other issues we had to resolve, it kind of evolved into the plan. Um, but, uh, what we're trying to do is we're trying to install a swimming pool in this area here. This is looking, you know, in this area, you're looking over this, this, this yard area here. Um, and this is the area where the pool will go, this is looking back toward the house. This is looking back toward the driveway, so you'd be looking this way toward the driveway. There is one tree that needs to come out, it's a twenty inch maple, it's right here. It's not in very good shape. Um, it was in the middle of a construction zone during, uh, house construction. Um, there was a lot of compaction around that tree. It's, we think it's very close to the pool, so we are going to, we are going to propose to remove it and will happily replace it with a new thing. So, one of the things that came, one of the, the interesting things about this, this, this property is they have the upper area here. And then it's bifurcated by the steep slope, and then you come down to the septic areas. And when the developer built these, these properties, three homes, there, the, this is our, our lot is lot seven, this is lot six, this is lot eight. And so the developer came in, he built a septic here, and he built a septic here, and he built a septic here. Um, and, and they all share that similar, these two at least, share that similar problem that you have, this steep band of slopes. And what happened was, as we started going through the, the, uh, the design process, it was noted that, um, the owner's landscaper was having an issue. Um, what he used to do is he used to cut this grass, and he would go and cut this grass next door. And it turned out that it wasn't something that the owner of the adjacent lot didn't feel that, you know, the landscaper should be accessing this property, uh, through his property. And so that started this whole discussion, well, how do we get down there? And we did some FOIL requests, and we tried to figure out if there was an easement in place. And it turned out that there isn't, there are drainage easements on the property, and that's what these are. But, uh, when I talked to Bob about it, these are private drainage easements. So, wh- what we came back with was that the access to the lower area from the upper area was ostensibly to be where the septic line drained down property. So this, the septic line leaves the, leaves the, uh, it, it, it leaves the house, it comes down to a, it comes to a tank and a pump chamber, and it comes down. And then it traverses this rock face here, and then it comes down and gets to the septic area. And that area is just, you just can't cross that area, it's, it's just too steep. We've got a photograph of the owner, um, standing on that. And, uh, if the board would like to do a site walk, uh, we, we, we would welcome that, and it'll speak for itself. Um, but it's quite steep. Um, certainly, you're not going to, you can't walk on it, so you're certainly not going to, there's the owner standing on it right there. And you could see, you could see these, these are the cleanout pipes of this, of the, of the, uh, of the septic line. So there's just no way that this is, this is going to be passable to get there. So that begs the question, well, how do you get there? And so there was kind of a construction path left over from when they built the house, and now the landscaper has to take his machine down here, and it's, it's quite steep and, and kind of treacherous. And we decided at that point, well, you know what, maybe as part of this project, we should be considering how we can get safe access between the upper home area because the fact is that this is their big flat area of the yard where it's open play for the kids, and they use it and they enjoy it. Um, clearly, it needs to be mowed, you can't not mow it with trees growing in the septic area, so it does need to be maintained regularly. So there seems to be a lot of good reasons why we should, uh, try to, uh, try to connect these two, um, not only for the maintenance of the property, um, but also, you know, for the enjoyment of the owners so they could access their property and, and enjoy it. So, so on our site plan, I'm going to quickly now try to go through the plans. So this is that, 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 that existing trail that's here now. This was the approved, uh, septic line that goes down. Um, this is where we'd be putting the pool in, in this area. And we are here because, one of the reasons we're here, obviously, uh, I mean, is, is because in order to do what we want to do, we have to amend clearing, approved clearing and grading limit lines. So what we have here is this green dashed line that you see in the approved condition. This is the clearing and grading limit line that was approved for the NICIC subdivision, the, the builder who built the house. Um, prior to that subdivision, uh, that, that clearing and grading limit line, there was the Brandywine subdivision line, and that's this blue one. And what, what, what happened was, in the last, in the last, uh, round of, of, of reviews, the applicant actually tightened up that clearing and grading limit line. Um, and made it actually more restrictive than it was during Brandywine, which certainly doesn't help us. Um, so when we met with staff, uh, it was discussed that, you know, we should really look at that closely and explain to the board what's happening and, 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 and how we propose to, to deal with that and how we propose to try, if we have to amend it, how we can try to keep things as close to what was approved. So, you know, in other words, if, if X amount of square feet was approved in the clearing and grading limit line, we should try to come in with that same number, and maybe we could juggle areas. So what this plan is showing now is, uh, this, the heavy dashed line is what the, the, the heavy deck black line is what we are proposing. That would be the. That would be the proposing and in some places you could see it's co-terminus with what was already approved. Um, again, the green one was the NICIC one. Um, the black one is ours. This is the area here we'll be talking about in a minute. Staff had indicated we had proposed to reclaim this area. Staff's position seemed unanimous that, that really doesn't really make much sense because it's already developed and how do you put it back to natural? So we, we're, we, we certainly have some homework to, to do there. So, we, we wanted to get this pool in here and we wanted to get this trail in here. Um, and so the lines you see here are the, the, again, the green line is the approved on the NICIC subdivision plan. The blue line was the Brandywine. Heavy dashed line is what's proposed now. And when you see the heavy dashed line highlighted in this tan color, that's our work disturbance line. That's where we'll be doing new work and that will, that, that will, it's about six thousand square feet, but that's the area where we will be actually working and, 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 and disturbing it. So, um, you know, the trail would go in, you would have to do a little bit of grading and maybe a boulder wall here or maybe a rock cut. You'd need another little boulder wall here. We're going to try to hold a constant twenty-five percent slope, um, which is less steep than either what was, what was here. For the, uh, for the, uh, the NICIC one or this existing one that was put in through the trails and, and, and we'll get to that. So.
Jerry, can I ask, um, maybe staff as well, why does this not trigger a steep slopes application in addition to, uh, clearing, grading?
Well, you know, what we did was we went into the area, this area, this subject area in the tan line. And we did, we did a slope analysis in that area. And, and, you know, when, when, when you do that, you have to add them all up and then you see if you go over the thresholds and if that's the case, you, you would trigger the need for a steep slope permit. So, it, it, we didn't trigger the, the thresholds because everything up here is, you know, that's under fif- fifteen percent up here. It's all flat. And then it's only this area here and there wasn't enough steep slope area to, to trigger the steep slope provision.
Good. Thank you.
So, uh, so what, what we did, we went in there and, 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 and we looked at it. So, so we, we profiled all three, all three accesses going down. This is, this is, this is what was on the approved NICIC plan. And this is the line of the, of the, of the septic discharge line. And apparently he, you, the developer went right down through this rock area, but this is just not passable. It's just, it's, it's not practical, uh. So apparently during construction, I guess, to get up and down there, this, this area was this, this middle area was put in. And you've got slopes on this one of about thirty-nine percent over here, twenty-four percent down in the lower area where it's a little shallow. This, of course, is fifty-plus percent in, in here and not passable. And it levels out to about twenty-two percent here, forty-two percent up at the top, very steep. So, what our concept was to increase the run and if we can increase the run, we can decrease the gradient. And that's, that's, that's what this plan is. Um, that's, that's what we're proposing to do. So, we're proposing to take, you know, that run and this run and elongate it with this run. And, and that's how we would get that down to get this to be a twenty-five percent constant slope. And we would propose to use, uh, this GeoWeb slope stabilization fabric. I think the board has seen this before. We've used it on the campfire club successfully. I've used it on horse farms up in North Salem on very steep slopes and it really works great. Um, it goes in, once it's in and once this thing is anchored, they, they go in and they prepare the saw upgrade. They put down a Geotex support fabric. They take the Geotex, uh, the GeoWeb fat, fat fabric. They, 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 they bring that out. That gets anchored to the ground. There's these, these, this white, these, these are called tendons. They run through the middle of it and then there's stakes and they get staked into the ground. And then it gets filled with the gravel and once it's filled, you're driving on it the same day. So it really works good. It's sustainable, um, and it'll last a long time. So, uh, that, that's what we were proposing. On that, I know Dennis had a, had a comment and I think it's a good one about, you, you know, the gravel and, and I think Bob mentioned the gravel that we should probably get that, you know, we need to, we need to take that into account into a change in cover type from, you know, natural areas to gravel. So we're, we're looking now at how we can modify that with some seed mixes, um, to, to, maybe when we get this thing in, when we get to the top course, what we could do is we can mix some topsoil. With some stone dust and we could top dress this thing and then we could put, um, we've been researching some seed mixes that we can put on that. Um, everyone has seen, you know, when you see on the sides of highways, you see those very steep slopes and these are some of the mixes that they do. So we've, we've found a couple of mixes that one is shade and one is, one is more, uh, on the upper slope. This would be more shady and then. So this will be on our planting plan, but we think we could probably get that so we, it won't be a gravel surface, but it'll, it's not going to get a lot of use, but it's, it's, it's there for an emergency. And, uh, so, so that's something that we're, we're looking into. So, uh. The thing that seemed to be, um, you know, a, a common, uh, comment right across the board with, uh, with, with Sabrina, Bob and Dennis was. So, you know, this area here on the side of the house. So what we've done here is the area you see in red is where we would have to expand the grading and clearing limit line. And we said, well, let's see if we can contract what, what's already been there so we can compensate one wipe out the other. And that's what we did and it was easier, you know, it was, it was a challenge. And so we, we had this area here and I mean, the point is well taken. It is a developed area. It is around the house and how do you get that back to a natural area? So, one of the things that we'll be coming back with, um, when we resubmit to the board and try to address the comments of staff and any comments the planning board has, is that. We've taken this area now out and we think we can go to this area here, down in the back, and we can get that area there. And I think that would address staff's concern that that area, which would be down here now, it would be this area and this is currently wooded. So what it would do is it would extend the wooded area, so extend the natural area. So that's something that we're going to be coming back with and we think that that probably can address that. Get this area photographed to show up.
Jerry, has the expansion area been built out on this, uh, septic?
No.
Really?
Uh, I wouldn't think so. I mean, maybe Alan knows, but I wouldn't think so.
According to the plan, the, according, hi, Alan Pilch.
Gary.
According to the plan, the, the, the area that's marked out for septic, the left hand, well, call it the left half of it, if you will. The upper half of it is the one that has the primary trenches, the lower half getting towards that wooded area. That's correct. It's, it's essentially in that area, but that.
Uh, but it's, it's all clear though, isn't it?
Yes, completely.
That's what I meant. I'm sorry. I didn't mean that it's actually built out as a functional.
No, 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 but it's cleared and it's.
Yeah, it's all cleared. Okay, so that's, that's all part of the lawn area that the family just enjoys. Okay.
Right, you, you're gonna, you're gonna install the expansion area in what's there. There's no tree removal that'd be required. It's a maintained lawn.
Right. Covering some of that area as Jerry's proposing, uh, would not cut into the expansion area then. It's, it's still would be outside the expansion area, but it will be. Coming inside the, uh, the clearing and grading limit line down there.
Correct, and, and you could see in this, in, in, in this winter aerial, this, you know, this is obviously where they built the, the septic area and this is that wooded area. So we're talking about taking that area from here and putting it here and extending this wood line, but not encroaching, not encroaching into the ex- ex- expansion area. So we think that could work and I think that will probably meet with, you know, I think everyone will think that, that'll probably make more sense. So we'll, we'll be studying that further and we'll coming back with that. But we, what, what we tried to do with this plan, we tried to show this is what the approved GLL, the disturbed areas were with Brandywine. This has got a little bit smaller when, uh, with, with the NICIC plan that came in and then this is ours. And what we tried to do is we tried to take this number here. I think it's like thirty-six thousand and change and you'll, this number and this number, these two are the exact same. That's, that's, that's what we're trying to do. And again, this, this, this viewport just shows this is the area that we're actually doing our work that we're going to disturb. So what we'd like to do is we'd, we'd like to expand the grading and limit line here, not only to let the, to allow the trail, but, you know, to get this pool area in here as well. You know, we, we've looked at this from an erosion control point of view and I'm sure this will get more detailed as we go forward, but, you know, we'll do the standard redundant measures and to try to keep everything stable. You, you know, it, it seems like we put a lot of work into this, in, in, into this trail thing, even though this project started as a swimming pool. Um, as a swimming pool project. And so just to give you an idea on the swimming pool. What, the way we would see this thing happening is that. What we did was we went and we looked at the Brandywine plant, so the pre-existing topo, we looked at, what, what was the pre-existing grade here? In the pre-existing grade before the property was developed recently, it was, it was this blue line. This is what the topo showed when it was the Brandywine subdivision one, before anybody cleared it and any, and, and anything happened. After the work was done to build the house, this backyard area got filled. It got filled in with this, with, 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 with this heavier line, this, this black line. And it, and it kind of went down and this is that area where you go down that, that, that steep area that we talked about earlier. And what we're proposing is to bring it here and then we're going to have a, we're going to have a retaining wall, um, along the, about six feet off of the pool. It's about three or four feet for most of it and it does go to about six feet at the, at the tallest point. But why I think I feel comfortable with the pool here is because once we dig down in, I, this is a rock, a bedrock controlled site. So, we're going to be able to anchor the bottom of this pool into rock. So this pool is going to be self-supporting. This retaining wall is not supporting the pool. The pool is going to support itself on rock. And in the past, when we've had cases like this, we've extended a stem wall, part of the pool shell construction. Of course, it'll be engineered by the pool company, but that'll probably come down and it'll probably be a stem wall with a footing on the backside. So we think the pool is going to be self-supporting. You know, once the, once the pool area is in, there would be a patio on, on three sides. It's a safety auto cover. Um, pool equipment would be over in this area. Um, we will need to move the septic tank and chamber. Alan would handle that with the health department. Um, you know, we would put a pool fence on it to coat. So, you know, we think that, you know, we think it, it's tight, but we think it works well and it thinks, you know, the family would have the enjoyment of the swimming pool. And plus they'd have, you know, their access to get down below. If they ever had to repair that septic, they can get down there now. There's a way to get down there. Um, I had an excavator out there to look at this existing trail and ask him if he could bring his machine down there and he kind of looked at me like I was crazy. Um, so, you know, we think it's necessary. We think it would, you know, I, I think it just improved the site safety and, 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 and the functionality of the site. Um, another question that had come up and it was noted both in Sabrina and Bob's, um. In, in Sabrina and Bob's, uh, memo was on, on how to handle the coverage in our, in our coverage calculations. And I just wanted to just touch on that. So, what, what had happened was we had taken the shared driveway that goes to lot eight. We're lot seven. This is six. And we had included, uh, portions of that and we were advised by the town planner that that wasn't necessary, so that, like, that's a good thing. But the town engineer also pointed out, he said, well, you know, you put that gravel trail in, you're changing that. You've got to add that into your coverage. So, we, you know, we'll be obviously coming back, um, to address this. To, to address this with, you know, with a revised submission to the board so we can continue this conversation. But just to quickly, you know, we, 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 we looked at it today. Okay, so the shared driveway portion is, is, is here. This is, this is what's on, this is the driveway that's on this site. This is the amount of driveway that development coverage for this driveway that's offsite is attributed to this lot because that's how they get access. Um, so we went through this and so by taking out this portion of the common driveway, we don't have to count and adding in this nine hundred square feet of trail that we do have to add in. You know, we've looked at this and, um, you know, it, these numbers would, would change. I mean, the, the driveway area goes down because we're taking out this section here, but the driveway area goes up because we're adding this trail. That changes the numbers. In the end of the day, um, we're finding that, you know, we have a total development coverage, including development coverage and building coverage of thirteen thousand three ninety. And the max is fourteen three eighty-one, so we think the project is zoning compliant from a, from a coverage point of view. So that was, that was, that was good news. So, um, that's kind of the overview of where we are and now I thought maybe Alan could just kind of talk about how he's going to address some of the, some of the engineering of, uh, on the project.
Sure.
Of course.
Just share screen.
Pardon? Alan, do you want me to stop you?
I'd like.
Yes, please. Just for a moment.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to. Uh, go ahead.
Sorry, Dick.
All right. I, a question on the, um, the trail going down to the lower level. Uh, and you indicated that the, the septic tank guy said, sure, I can get down there, right? That was what you were saying as when he says, what are you nuts?
No, no. But I said to a, an, an excavator who happened to be doing work for me down the street.
Uh, excavator, okay.
And, and I asked him, you know, I said, you know, this is something that's going to be coming up and the owners are going to be asking you for pricing. You want to come and look at it? And I said, what do you think? And he looked at this here and he said, you want me to go down there with my excavator and carry material to fix a sap septic? And he was, he, he thought that that was awfully steep. To be getting down there. He, you know, he said.
Ah, okay.
Could we do it? He said, yeah, we can do it. It is not ideal, but it, it would be horrible. He said, we'd have to take everything down there like one bucket at a time if we ever had to make a repair.
Yet it was done when this was built out.
Oh, no, no. When it was built out, it was built out from below. It was built, everything was built out. I, I talked to the developer. When it was built out, let me go back to the other plan.
I will unshare. I'm sure, I'm sure they got access through twelve Cynthia.
Al, can I, can I go back?
Yes, I just unshared. I, I, I bet they got access through twelve Cynthia.
That's exactly.
Yeah, because when I was there, I was like shocked at what it's like. Especially for a septic guy like me, climbing up was quite an effort.
Let me try to share.
I did it.
Okay, now, can, can everybody see, see this?
Yep.
Okay, so I talked to the developer. When the developer did this, he came in this way, all the way around. He built this one. He built this one and he built this one. So I just assumed that there was an easement in place so they can always get there. And then when I asked Blair about it and I asked her husband Greg about it and then they both studied their documents and their closing documents and we couldn't figure it out. And when, in the end, we found out that there wasn't anything there and we said, well, gee whiz, how the hell are we gonna, how the hell are we ever gonna fix it if it, if it, if it goes bad? And so that's kind of started how this pool project kind of got into a bigger project.
Or if you need to construct the hundred percent expansion area, then what do you do?
Right.
Yep. Well, how do you, how do you then, then get a truck in there to empty it? How do you empty the, uh, oh, your septic tank is going to be up front and this is going to be the drainage. Never mind. I got it. I got it.
But even still, if you have to get down to clean outs or even just to construct the hundred percent expansion area, that's a major issue.
And now hopefully, hopefully, when it was built out, that the septic fill for the expansion area was put in place. Um, and then you just have to go in and excavate and put in the piping, but even still, you, you still have to bring in some extra gravel and that kind of thing. So it really would be, it would be a difficult job.
Yep.
So, um, Jerry, this new, um, pathway which you are proposing to get down there. Clear on this. You are proposing a, uh, a pervious surface, uh, paving which would go the full length of that?
Yes. It, we would, we would start with this, uh. We, we would, we.
All right, it's okay. And so, and so, um, and it, the drawing says a twenty-five percent gradient?
Mm-hmm. It, it's still twenty-five percent is not i- i- ideal, but it's certainly better than what we got now.
So for something that's going to get practically no use. Um, because that's, that's not the tank, that's the field. Uh, the only reason to get down there is if there is a, some sort of, well, two, two reasons. First of all, I'm guessing if there is a, a failure problem in the field and you need to get some, um, materials and equipment down there to fix it. Or if you, one needs to actually, um, uh, improve the expansion area, right?
Right.
Although, sorry, could I? Hi, um, by the way, uh, I'm Blair and I, I wanted to just say, I, I know it's very late and I really appreciate you all being here. Um, Jerry, um, members of the board, please tell me to be quiet, but I just want to point out that the trail actually will get used because our family is going to use it. Um, our family. Our family would like to use it to kind of get up and down the property. So in addition to it being kind of our our safeguard, right? If, you know, the horrible unlikely event occurs where there is a problem that needs to be fixed in the septic area. It would also be used by our family because that's kind of our flat area and our flat space where our children would play. And in as much as I hope that it never gets used for, you know, the purpose of fixing the the septic. I'm aware that right now, if there is a problem, I don't have a way to solve that. And as a homeowner who's you know, responsible for that, that that makes me nervous.
Okay, so no, I understand that. I'm not saying you go away. I'm not saying it 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 you should not do it. I'm just asking questions about the nature of the surface that's being proposed.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, can I just finish? So is there is there any other equipment that gets down there? You said it's for the family. Are you are you running mowing equipment up and down in order to mow that property down there?
Well, yeah, that's that's the other thing. It would allow the landscaper to get down there. You know, easier access. He's he's going down the slope now with great difficulty.
So now in that in that case, that is a much more frequent access during the the warm months, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm just trying to just trying. I I just, it just seems to me that it's, and I could be wrong, but you know, I walk the trails all the time in in these parks and there are eight foot wide in many locations, there are eight foot wide pathways going up and down slopes that that actually hold old farm roads, old forest roads, old access roads that are still there. And I just wonder, is it? Does it make any sense to not put a pervious paving down there and just instead just let it be dirt? Compacted earth?
Well, it's 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 gravel. It is going to be pervious. It's gravel.
Well, you got to get, you talk to Bob Cioli as to what deduct you get from what you might expect and make sure you have that all squared away because when you pound the you know, the driveway down, you know, with weight, the amount of percolation goes down.
Well, the
It just runs on the surface.
The 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 product that we is is a is a is a three quarter inch trap rock. Which does have void spaces throughout it. We use this, this is good. This gets used a lot by the pool companies because they tell me that the three quarter inch trap rock where they have to backfill under pools, it's self-compacting. Because it's, you know, it's angular, it has these spaces on it. It's down to three quarters and that's three quarter inch. We found when we use that in in this in this application, rather than like, it's not like a stone dust or an item four that does pack like hard pack and asphalt. I understand that. We're not proposing that. We're proposing something like a three, three, three quarter inch trap 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 rock thing that will have a 40% void space in it and allow water to go through it.
Okay, right.
And of course, Alan will have to figure out what the runoff coefficient is and work all that out with Bob.
Yes.
Alan, I'll stop.
Interesting.
And you can go back.
Yeah, just briefly to show. Hopefully you can see on this screen. I just want to point out here that this is a lot at 10. You can see with cursor hopefully on the screen. You can see that this is number 12 Cynthia Court. This is from the Brandywine Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Future Condition Drainage Area Map. I just wanted to point out from a stormwater perspective that in the original plan did show a pool in this lot. This is number 10. Did have a deck in there too. And you know, the essentially all the runoff from the rear yard goes into this drainage swale which is conveyed down to I'll call it a regional, if you will, detention basin on number on on number 12 Cynthia Court. And the front half of the lot goes to another drainage swell and into a basin here which discharges sequentially into the other basins. So I just wanted to point that out. And back then, when this Brandywine was, when the SWIP report was done, the regulation was capture and treat the two-year storm event. The present one is a one-year storm event. And they provide a peak rate attenuation. I know Bob would say this to me. Of one to 100 year storms, but the the runoff, the runoff, the 24-hour precipitation depths were different. A hundred year then was 7.5 and now it's about 9.3 roughly. And they did loading calcs. So what what I'll end up doing is sort of modeling the runoff into the existing detention basins which are here on on 12. And also to sort of blend that with the new criteria, which is a slightly higher precipitation amount across storm events where it's higher in the 100 and slightly less in the more frequent storm events and also provide water quality improvement. There was water quality improvement, but previously in the old DEP regulations, all they looked at was loading rates of total nitrogen phosphorus, TSS and and biochemical oxygen demand. So it's a little bit different now. They sort of simplified the criteria in the 2015 stormwater management.
In any event, after all that, you are going to meet the current requirements, right?
I'm sorry, it was a little bit hard to hear that.
You will be meeting the current standards that are required, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to point out.
That's all I need to know.
I just want to point out the context of it. So that you could see that, you know, there is this drainage rail that does exist, which conveys the flow into these offsite detention. And what I'll do is model them to see how they're functioning.
Right, that's what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
And also just see how this swale, which conveys flow into this basin, will function under the new criteria.
Right. And you'll be working with Bob on that.
We're in the process of putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay. Sabrina, you want to run for your memo?
Sure, my pleasure. It's a type two action, very similar to the last application. The application appears to be zoning compliant. There were some changes in the setback distances and the rear yard setback distances as compared to the approval, the original house approved site plan. But it's still in compliance. Jerry had mentioned the coverage calculations and how they over calculated for the driveway. But in accordance with Bob's comment, they under calculated in relation to the proposed driveway. So I'm sure Jerry will fix that and we'll get a better sense of where we are with that.
I had a question on that. I had a question on that. It seems to me that we've had other applications, it must be confusing rule, where there is a common roadway or common driveway.
Yep.
I thought that anyone applying for something had to use the full road in their calculations for coverage.
No, you only use that portion that each house uses up to their driveway.
Up to that point, okay, yeah.
Yeah. And so so in this instance, it is a very convoluted calculation, given the number of houses, the limited number of houses on the road. For example, everybody uses the first section. The second section is used by two of the three. The third section is by three of the three and the last is section is used by the sole fourth. So Jerry has done a great job in explaining it on the site plan, but he just over explained and is taking credit for an area that he shouldn't be taking credit for. The 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 other thing, the plans contain an aerial picture would show this house in relation to the neighbors' houses. It would be helpful and consistent with other applications you've reviewed to put the distances of the pool to the neighboring properties so that we understand the relationship between them. The relocation of the pump chamber for the septic system will need the Westchester County Health Department approval for that. And then the change in the clearing and grading limit line. And I had mentioned this to Jerry on the phone that on the southern end of the house, if to the right, if you're looking at the house from the driveway, they are proposing to move that clearing and grading limit line up to the house. I suggest that they leave an area separating the limit line from the house so that they can maintain around the house. I think it's just unrealistic to expect their disservice immediately adjacent to the structure. And then that's really all of my, all of my questions. You know, as Jerry had said, he did not provide any mitigation plans because he wants to make sure that the planning board is on board with the concept of the change in the clearing and grading limit line as well as the roadway down to the septic system. Or the path, I should say.
Yeah, okay. Dennis, you have some comments?
Sure. I'll start unofficially since I visited the property. All the tree strapping that Mr. Nickich put in, that's on your trees that are planted, you can remove those now. Those are not serving any purpose. In fact, they're probably harmful to the long-term growth of the trees. So as long as they're vertical, you're free to remove those. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, I know, Jerry, you seem to address just some of the things that I was trying to do just to try to shave away some of your CGLL contraction area because, you know, I didn't want to have like I saw this, I only thought of like a reverse zoo effect where nature can look in on the enclosure of humans. It just seemed unrealistic to push that up right up to even a lot cabin probably has a little bit of room. So you you said you would address that and that's and that's fine. But also too, if you heard the the prior application, which I know I was looking to sort of, you know, run to the to the mitigation because obviously something's already been done. I was also trying to just, you know, sort of see if there was a way to to just reduce any of this, you know, proposed incursion either by, you know, as we typically do, you know, pools, patios, a way to maybe tie into what's what's already existing and not extend this you know, new trail as far as as far as that goes in. So that was just something almost from the perspective of an alternatives view is to maybe, you know, to if if necessary, and if it comes to it, to refute my suggestions and why, you know, it wouldn't work for for whatever reasons, topography, substrate, et cetera.
Well, we're certainly willing to look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry and Alan, you've seen Bob's comments. We've got here, obviously, those need to be responded to.
Alan, Alan will be responding to all of this.
Okay. I guess I have one question. That is explore the necessity of an eight-foot wide roadway or path. You know, I understand it could be used in the future for heavy equipment to get down there, but that's not going to be very frequent. So I just wonder whether or not you could help yourself on your coverage calculations if that were, say, a six or a seven foot trail and keep you in good safe condition and that might be just for the environment as well. It's just something to look at. Eight feet of stuff is is awfully wide.
Well, I I I'm not sure if my if my if my share came came up, but our trail cross section is the travel surface is proposed to be six feet. And but we were going to extend the GeoWeb. It comes in, you can buy it in like six feet, eight feet, 10 feet, 12 feet. And we were going to get an eight footer so we can have a one foot shoulder on either side that's stable, but we would topsoil that and we would seed that. So it's visually, it's going to be, it it it's a six foot trail with one foot grass shoulders that are also stabilized just in case they needed a little extra room. So we thought it would make sense to build it that way. And again, you know, in response to some of the other comments we heard, we are going to also explore trying to work in a a stone dust topsoil mixture as a topping course and get this seeded with some of those, some of those roadside mixes and some of them are like reclamation mixes and you know, they grow in very sterile, dry soil. So we and 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 it gets full sun all day long. So I I think we can probably get that. So it doesn't look like a gravel trail. So it looks like, it just looks like kind of a grassed a a grass slope. So we're certainly willing to explore all that and 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 we'll be going back and forth with with Dennis and Bob and Sabrina on all these things to to make that it right. And we'd like to come back with that stuff to the board.
Sure, sure. I guess the question I would have is whether or not your one foot shoulders will count toward again coverage. I leave that to staff to to work out with you.
Okay.
I've never had a trail with shoulders, but if you're a woods in Newcastle, but it's very interesting, new concept for us. That's fine, but we'll see if that that counts or not. I certainly understand what you're doing. It seems to make good sense. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. This is a comment that I made to the last application. I don't know if you guys were listening into that. But I look at your photographs. Five, six, seven, eight, these are photographs within the CGLL area. And I'm looking at the forest floor here and it looks like your landscaper's been going in there and cleaning up the dead wood, the dead fall. I don't see any evidence, any really enough saplings that we would expect to see in this location. I don't see really any evidence that this is actually a natural or enough evidence is a natural forest floor. And I'll just say it again, that it's that the the clearing and grading limit line, the point of it is not just to protect the tree, it protects the whole sort of food chain. And the you know, the deadfall is very important in regenerating the soil. The deadfall is really very important to getting the sorts of insects that other species like birds feed on. That it's the bottom of the food chain. And it feeds the forest from bottom to top, all the way up. And one of the things that makes this, I think, this town a wonderful place to live in, it's the forest we live in. And I think it's our job and the town board for years has had this legislation in place and I believe encourages us to use it to protect that. And I understand that this is a large piece of property and, you know, one would think, gee whiz, I should be able to do what I want with it. But the very fact that it's such a large piece of property, the way in which the forest floor has been disturbed here and not allowed to do its job on such a large piece of property is is a problem, I think. And I think there needs to be a different attitude about this. We said in the last in our last application that sometimes in new subdivisions or when we end up with a problem where people are really monitoring the they're not aware of the fact that the line is there. We'll have monuments put in the ground so that they know not to mow past that line. I really think that we need to have a conversation, maybe not tonight, but next time you come in about the activity of landscape maintenance that has apparently been engaged in here and we need to figure out a way to to sort of do something about that. We can't, I just don't think we can encourage this kind of treatment in the landscape. It's counter to what I think our principles are. And if you talk to the conservation board, you know, I I'm sure that Dennis, perhaps you should be weighing in here if you choose, but I believe this is one of the principles the conservation board has relatively strong feelings about. And they actually encourage, in my memory, they encourage DC GLL areas as part of a interconnected sort of landscape of biomass and habitat that interconnects through the town. And I think that we need to have a conversation about that.
You know, Mr. Curley, that's a good point. And what we will do is when we come back with our mitigation plan, we we will propose to go in there and to and to do work in that understory. And I mean, you're right, it has been disturbed in the past. The predominant ground cover on the ground plane is is the Japanese still still grass. We will try to try to pull that out of there. We'll try to come in there with more native seed mixes to try to encourage more of a natural floor.
That'll be great.
That'll be part of our plan.
By the way, Jerry, once again, superb set of plans. Thank you so much. Very professional.
Thank you very much.
Okay, members of college. Okay, so we'll be looking for additional information from you. And once you have that into us. And want to have that into us. I guess the bottom line for the takeaway is that we would encourage you to pursue this further, that we think you're on the right track. We can't take any votes or anything else, we're right now kind of advisory, but I guess the advisory takeaway is that it's looking good. So please go forward and, and complete the applications and get them as a staff and then we'll, we'll hear you again.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, great.
Good night.
Okay, good night Jerry. Good night. Okay. That's it. The excitement is over. Is there a motion to close the, the hearing? I mean, the meeting.
Can they make a motion to close?
Yeah.
Well, how can you, do you have a, a quorum?
To close the advisory meeting.
You have three people in the building?
For ceremonial purposes, we'll make the motion, but.
For practice.
You know, if we don't close the meeting, I won't sleep tonight.
Yeah, we're not closing the meeting, we have to stay here. So is there a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Is it?
On favor?
I'm with it for all the work that we did that was before we had this nice little talk about it off, off the main web. I love it.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks Jerry.
Good night everyone. All right, good night.
Good night.